Yes.
The, uh, they have a really nice track. It's, uh, the hard thing is, he says, he lives over there.
Jack, Jack, did you find out what happened down the street?
No, I just picked it up. I didn't want to.
Well, I mean, they weren't letting anybody go. I thought it was, I didn't see him.
No, I didn't see a thing. I did see a stretch around the road.
A lot of cars.
Thought I might've got there late.
Just now, 6:30.
Yeah, everybody ready?
I was. Running my mouth.
Good evening. This is nice, it's nice to hear everybody talking. I had to recruit, uh, Mr. Wompler to be my board member wrangler, so, uh, that was kind of nice. Great to have everybody here tonight. We're very, very happy to have you, students, we're happy to have you. Um, one of the things I'm just going to ask right off the bat, we will be doing all of our recognitions, if everybody would, just wait until we get, I think the last people are going to be recognizing our teachers, so students need to stay and cheer for your teachers, and then I'll give everybody a chance to leave if you want to. You're welcome to stay, but I bet you're going to leave, so I'll let you know when, if you don't mind. Um, if everyone would, please rise, and Dr. Gardenhour is going to lead us in the pledge of flag in a moment of silence.
Okay, let's have a moment of silence.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America, and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first recognition will be of the EHS boys basketball team. If you'll go ahead and come on up here, and we'll let the coach talk about his players Thank you, Coach Hunkett.
All right, while they're, oh, okay, while they're getting lined up there, just, uh, just a few things about this season. These guys were, you know, a joy to coach, great group of guys, a lot of fine young men here, and, you know, I think we're really blessed to, you know, live in this area and be able to work with the kids that we get to work with. That's not always true in other areas, and, you know, very minimal problem-wise throughout the whole season, and, uh, you know, can't tell you how excited I am just to, you know, coach year in, year out, and I really appreciate the responsibility of, you know, working with these guys. Um, I want to say, you know, thanks to our, our coaches, Coach Van Husk, Coach Pless, who's sick today, couldn't come, Coach Emmerich, Barry Edney helps us out on our stats, does a lot of other things for us there as a volunteer, and we really appreciate those guys. Uh, these guys went 23 and 11 on the season, uh, which was, uh, I think a lot better than a lot of people expected. Had another, uh, substate appearance, uh, first home substate in over a decade, and that's really, really difficult to do in double-A basketball, and, uh, I was really proud of them, just, uh, you know, how they finished out the year. Um, we come up second again in the conference, we've not got that conference yet, but, uh, we'll get it, and, uh, we've got a district championship to show for this year and also a regional championship. Um, bunch of individual awards, and, uh, you know, we're not concerned about those individual awards, uh, because, uh, these guys come in every day as a team, and, uh, you know, they really grow up, uh, as people and as players all year long, and, uh, can't say just, uh, how proud I am of them, and we want to thank all you guys, board members, for letting us take the trips. We got to go to, uh, some great, um, Christmas, um, tournaments and that kind of thing, got to go to Kentucky and, uh, Ray County. Uh, we didn't do real well in those tournaments, but, uh, still got to go, had some injuries, but, uh, you know, it was a good time. Thank you, Mr. Gardenhour, for all that you do, and, uh, you know, thank you for, everybody for the support that you give these kids, uh, we had a lot of that this year, and, uh, I think it'll just continue to grow, and, uh, we're looking forward to next season also, so, thank you very much.
Good job, guys, thank you.
Would Kelsey McCamey, is she here this evening? Okay. That's fine, thank you very much, Coach. All right, move on to our, uh, EHS girls soccer team. If you want to come on up. I think Sarah said she wanted to speak for the team tonight. Uh, we've got several playing softball tonight and others in various spots, dance and some other things. Uh, this was a, uh, a turnaround year for us. Last season, uh, we didn't quite achieve what we thought we should, uh, and this, that was after two, uh, regional championships, so this year, being able to come back and win the district and go to, uh, for the seniors, their third substate appearance in four years was a, was a big deal. Uh, so they worked very, very hard, and, uh, as we usually do, our record doesn't always reflect how well we're playing. Uh, we're always playing, uh, the best teams that will play us, and we're thankful they do, whether it's Dobbins Bennett or Science Hill, or Christian Academy in Knoxville, or whoever will, will schedule us. So, uh, many times, uh, it's a process throughout the season, and just like this year, uh, we got to the substate and played at Knox Catholic, who I think is going AAA next year, I hope. Uh, but as we, uh, we went and played on their field and played a very, very good match, uh, and lost just 3-0 to the eventual state champions, and played a very, very good game. As a matter of fact, they were afraid to even make substitutions until the very end, when they finally put it away, so, a season of constant improvement, uh, bringing players along, uh, and a very good, uh, send-off for a senior class that, raise your hands if you're seniors that are here, uh, who for four, like I said, had three substate appearances in four seasons, so, uh, thankful for all their hard work and their leadership and bringing along the girls behind us. Thanks to Danny for making, reminding me that the glass is usually more than half-full, uh, instead of half-empty with a leak, uh, as I usually see it, uh, for keeping us positive, and thanks to all the people that come out to watch us. Fall, uh, very busy for folks, and, uh, girls work hard and they deserve the support, everybody gives them, we thankful for what we get there at the school, uh, people come out and watch us, so, and they know I like to talk, so I'm going to stop now, so, thank you very much. This is a very, very good team, and we, uh, and like I always tell them at the end of the season, is they set the bar for the girls that come behind them, and, uh, this group of seniors have done that, and if you're a junior, raise your hand. Oh, you've got a lot of work to do. So, uh, Joel, thank you very much for all the support you give us. Uh, this is your 2014-15 Elizabethan Girls Soccer Team. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, the EHS cross-country team.
Hello, okay. Um, I am Amber Able, and this is the majority of our girls varsity cross-country team. We are missing Ellie Decker and Mackenzie Richardson, um, and then we also have up here Cody Baker. Um, our girls cross-country team qualified as a team for the state cross-country meet. Um, in order to get there, they're runners-up at conference and also runner-up at regionals, um, just barely out of the first-place spot in both of those events, and we hope to take champs in, uh, conference and regionals next year as well, but, so through these accomplishments, the entire girls team got to go to the state meet, which is, um, the first time in a while, from what I understand, I think we've had a couple hit-or-miss seasons, but, um, it was really fun to take the whole team and have that experience. And then in addition to that, Cody Baker qualified individually, um, he was our only male athlete to qualify all the way to the state level, um, this year, and we're just really proud of all of them. I just wanted to point out, uh, Macy was our top finisher in state, and Macy, raise your hand, wait. She was 14th overall, she did get, um, all-state qualifications, and she is only a sophomore, so we get to keep her for another few years, and then Cody Baker was obviously our highest-placing boy, and he finished 28th overall in the state. Um, and then at this state cross-country meet, you will have anywhere between 150 and 200 runners, so know that these numbers may seem high in other sports, but they're very significant here. Um, there's something else I was going to point out. Macy, Cody, I don't remember now. Our goals for next season, um, we have a very strong girls program right now, and we hope to be able to utilize our boys program in the strengths that we have, and hopefully we get a couple coming in for next year as well, but overall, I would really like to see first place, um, on both sides in conference, and if possible, in region as well, but for the girls team in particularly, we definitely expect to go back to the state meet next year, and I hope that we can be bigger contenders in the team placement, that's what I was going to say. The girls finished 14th overall as a team, um, out of 25 teams at the state meet, so that was really significant. We're hoping to be at least in the top 10 as a team, and hopefully we can get the whole boys team to join us as well. These kids run really hard, it hurts really bad to run that fast and to run that hard, and, um, they put all that pain to the side and they tough it out every day, and we just started track season a couple weeks ago, and they're all out there doing the same thing again, so, your 2014 Elizabethan Cross Country.
Is, uh, Jamie Hinkle here? Okay, great.
I'm John Hutchins, I'm the, uh, girls golf coach, uh, this past year was my first year, and, uh, Jamie, uh, was a state qualifier this year despite me, so, uh, I appreciate the work that she, uh, has done over the years. Uh, the great thing about Jamie is day in and day out, she's always got a smile on her face, and, um, uh, she and, and Mattie Campbell were two of our, uh, top golfers throughout the course of the year, it was pretty much Jamie's in first, Mattie's second, Mattie's in first, Jamie comes in second in the match, and, uh, so, we, uh, we had a great year, we were second in the district, um, we qualified for the region, and in the region, uh, Jamie was one of the top five individual qualifiers, making it, and then she made it, uh, to the state tournament. State tournament, unbelievable, uh, great golf experience for anyone, like cross-country, you're out there, you know, against, uh, a tremendous number of golfers on a very, very difficult course, and she did a good job for us, she made us proud, she made us proud just to get there. And, uh, the thing that I liked most of all is, is that, um, Jamie's attitude, um, she had more fans, uh, the, uh, the, the Marshals were always, I mean, they would always come up and say, "How's she doing?", you know, "She's a great kid, we love talking", and she'll talk to anybody, and, uh, but, uh, we're going to miss her, she's a senior, and, uh, one of the great things that, uh, is coming down the pike very, very soon is Jamie is, uh, going to sign with Milligan, so, uh, she'll be here. So Jamie's going to be able to play golf in her backyard, and, uh, we'll all be able to go over and see her, but we're very, very proud of the job that she's done and the way that she's represented our schools.
We have, we have loved recognizing our students, but this is a special meeting because we also recognize our Teachers of the Year, and, uh, we're so proud of them and all their hard work.
If the Teacher of the Year winners would come on up front here, and is there, just come up as a group, and then I'll introduce you. Uh, you hear all the time, when you talk about organizations that are successful, there's a host of reasons why, but it always boils down to people, and anywhere we go, people know, you know, Elizabethan City Schools, and they know it for two reasons. They know it, number one, for the great kids that we have, the students that we get to work with each and every day, and they also know it for the people that we have working with them, and this year, this group of Teacher of the Year, this, these, these are the best of the best, and it's, it's always a fun time of year to get to recognize them for, uh, their accomplishments, and again, just their dedication to, uh, the children of our community, you know, is, is unparalleled, and so, we always love the opportunity to brag on them a little bit, so, uh, to start with, the building-level Teachers of the Year, from east side, in the pre-K4 area, was Ms. Rachel Howe. And then from the east side, in the five-through-eight-special-areas category, is Ms. Rachel Ayers. From Harold McCormick Elementary in the pre-K4, Ms. Brandy Irwin. And the five-through-eight-special-area winner from Harold McCormick was Ms. Julie Harris. From west side, the pre-K4 winner, Ms. Courtney Mathena. And then also from west side, in the five-through-eight-special-area, is Ms. Leanne Fox, and she was unable to be here today, so if you'll give her a round of applause as well. And then we had two winners, one from TA Duggar and one from the high school, and both of these individuals are, as we speak, they're working with students. The winner from TA Duggar is Ms. Michelle Butler. She is coaching soccer tonight, and then from the high school, it's Mr. Ryan Pressnell. And he's with the baseball team tonight, so, um, again, the way this was determined, this was, uh, by faculty vote, at each location, and so again, you know, the recognition comes from, from your peers, and so that, that really means something as well, okay?
He's a smart one.
He's been named Administrator of the Year.
And then after the, the building-level winners, then those individuals, we, we have to determine a wi, a winner from each of the three divisions, which again is pre-K4, five-through-eight-special-areas, and then nine-through-12, and so, these individuals went through a process, all the administrators in the school system, took their application and, and combed over those, and everyone scored those, and then we came up with the winner for the system level, who will then in turn represent the school system at the regional level. So the, um, the, the system-level winners, in pre-K4 is Ms. Courtney Mathena. And then the five-through-eight-special-area winner was Ms. Rachel Ayers. And then, uh, obviously, Mr. Ryan Pressnell was the winner at the high school level, and again, he couldn't be here, so if you'll give him a round of applause. So again, this is the system-level group that will represent the school system at the regional level, so if you'll give him one more round of applause.
As promised, if you would like to leave, I'll give everybody a few moments, but again, you are welcome to stay. Unless you're a principal, you have to stay.
I am, they care. Those guys were a fun to watch.
Boy, they got better, didn't they? My goodness.
So glad you're here.
Make our hearts stop sometimes.
Uh, and the unlucky few have to stay. All right, we will move on, we've got a light agenda, so hopefully we'll get out of here quickly. Um, it's time for citizens to speak in accordance with Board Policy 1.404. Anyone wishing to address the board, please come forward, state your name and your address. Since I see no one but people who are required to be here, except Kelly, uh, you want to come up and talk, Kelly, or, okay, we're good then. All right, um, it's time to approve the consent and regular agenda, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, any, uh, questions, comments? Everybody going good about it? All right, I'm on the floor to, uh, approve the consent and regular agenda, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carried. Dr. Gardenhour.
Okay, uh, as part of the superintendent's report this time, I want to talk about a few exciting things that are going on, uh, in the school system. First of all, uh, we've entered into a partnership, and we'll have a memorandum of understanding next month with Milligan College, uh, to work with our pre-service teachers, and it'll be exclusive partnership based on a grant that they've received at Milligan, and, uh, we're really excited, they're going to train, uh, mentor teachers, and we're going to, uh, do a better job of our pre-service and new incoming teachers, of making sure that they have a proper training. We've had an induction program that's been very effective, uh, in the past, but this will add to that and give us, uh, a little bit more meat to that program, so, and when we talked about earlier about retaining, uh, teachers, it's not just getting them in the door, it's retaining them afterwards, and so, we feel that that's going to be very positive, um, in the near future. Uh, I attended a training, and thanks to the board for allowing me to go to the training, uh, for the 10-ready assessment. I learned a lot more than I wanted to know about, uh, about that, but, uh, we are really looking at devising a plan to, um, work over the next year or so to make sure that we're about ready, and, uh, when the time comes, Mr. Wright is not here right now, but he spent a whole day with our curriculum team, and they're working, uh, double-time to try to make sure that our teachers are trained and prepared for the new assessment that's coming. Um, I put out a little copier update here, is just from Saratoga, that's one of, uh, really, there's really been two companies that are interested at this point, maybe at looking at this. It's kind of odd that Tri-City's business machines has not submitted anything at this point, but, uh, Kingsport Imaging and Saratoga have, and so that gives you kind of a cost estimate of where we are right now, at about a total buy-in of $135,000, uh, for us, so, that's, that's where we are, and we'll wait to see what Kingsport Imaging has, and I'll do a, a similar comparison, uh, for you, I should have that by Friday, so we can really look at it and make a good decision on that. I want to make sure to announce in the public that our spring break, I know that there have been a lot of questions about that, our spring break is as planned, we will have a Teacher Conference Day, uh, the 26th of March, and the 27th will start our spring break, some parents are getting out of town on the 26th, but, uh, I do want to say thank you to Candace McLean, the new commissioner, for being very reasonable and trying to make sure school systems had some help this year with all the snow and bad weather that we've had, uh, she's been a breath of fresh air for everyone, um, in the state. And last of all, just say thanks to all of our faculty and staff for all the hard work they're doing, uh, I can't find a place in our school system where our people are not putting forth a lot of effort right now, getting ready for testing, they're at a, it's at a fever pitch, trying to make sure our students have as much as they can prior to testing, and, uh, I just want to make sure they know that that, uh, does not go unnoticed. Okay, for personnel update, resignation... Resignation, Austin S. Murray, EHS Custodian, effective 3/1215. Kristi Poole, EHS Math Teacher, effective 3/53115. Thank you.
All right. It's time for reports by board members. Anybody have anything they want to talk about? Ms. Peters and I attended Eastside's faculty meeting. We had a chance to talk about where we are with the director's search. And before we leave, I would like for us to schedule our workshop so that we can get moving on that snow, put us behind a little bit. So, anybody else? All right, let's get to the regular agenda. First item is to approve textbook adoption for the 2015-2016 school year in the area of mathematics. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. Have a second?
Sure. Mr. VanHus.
There's a lot of tiny topping on this page.
Yes, there is.
It's like a design, as far as I'm concerned.
Yes, there is. We, as you alluded to before, we're also a little bit behind. We basically lost two weeks of instruction. Not only did we lose two weeks of instruction, we had textbook committee meetings scheduled over the snow break and obviously those weren't able to occur. So there's a deadline looming with the state of April the 15th to approve textbook purchases. And as you know, this year is somewhat concerning to us based on the fact new standards are coming out in a year, year and a half yet. They're asking us to purchase math textbooks at this point. So to give us a little more time, what we would ask you to consider today is we would do a blanket adoption for, just at this point. So basically, we're saying we're adopting every text on there. And then what we would propose is that as we continue our process, this allows us to meet the April 15th deadline with the state, but at the same time, we'll continue to work, we'll continue to gather feedback and come up with an informed decision and we will bring that back to the board at that point in time and you'll know exactly what we're proposing. And then we would obviously want you to consider action on that item at that point in time. Again, I spoke a little bit the last month at the board meeting. There are several options on the table. We can adopt nothing this year and wait and see how the process unfolds. We could go ahead and make a selection like we normally do. We could pick, again, what we're doing today gives us the ability to do any and all of that. So that's what I would ask you to do at this point in time. And again, we will continue to try to narrow that down. At the assessment workshop, the TEN Ready Workshop that Dr. Gardenhour, myself, and Mr. Pless attended, the textbook session I was in was actually a math workshop. And one of the comments was, "All the texts that are on the current approved list that could be adopted this year meet the rigor requirements regardless of what happens with TEN Ready and the standards." And the reality is that the textbooks that we currently have and are using do not meet that rigor requirement. So obviously, part of the whole discussion needs to be, well, if we stick with what we have now for another year, you know, our teachers will have to do, you know, I'm not sure how much work they'll have to do, but they'll have to do some other work to get the students ready just for the test next year. So that's part of our concern as well. So as you can see, there are a lot of factors, you know, playing into this decision.
Can refresh my memory, but what's the makeup of the committee that makes this recommendation?
Sure. There are two teachers in each building. There is a parent representative from each building and of course, the administrator from each building, myself, Marsha Taylor, who is our math coach, she's a part of that. I think that's it. Now, that's, and I'm sorry, obviously, they're gathering feedback from the entire faculty. It's just they are the only official members of that, of the committee.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments? Okay. I'm on the floor. Approve textbook adoption for the 2015-2016 school year in the area of mathematics. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Next item. Approve scoreboard and sound system for the new EHS stadium. Bid specifications approved through TCPN contract. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Okay. We want to kind of out of the chute. Obviously, this conforms to the TCPN contract. And what we're proposing that we're going to use as far as funding for this is that we do have some of the Jason Witten Toughman money that's still available and we have between $30,000 and $40,000 there. We also have some savings from the sales tax that you all have approved, allow us to do, and we're going to use that. We're still receiving a lot of brick-and-paper donations. We've received approximately around $8,500 to $10,000 in that so far and we are still on the fundraising circuit, making sure that we're talking with the people that would want to give to the stadium project. So we feel comfortable that we will have some money. We may have some savings as time goes on, you know, that we could possibly see through our construction project, although we're not sure there and so we'll not report those. But, you know, right now, we feel that we have a good edge on making sure that we have funds available to complete this. And obviously, we cannot really have a stadium without a scoreboard and sound system. So it's one of those things that's going to be in need.
The rendering, is this kind of what we're looking at or is this just kind of an example?
That's pretty close, I think, to what it will look like, Mr. VanHus, if you want to talk a little bit about that.
Very sharp-looking.
It is. It is. Couple of features. There's obviously signage at the top that reflects the stadium name. That sign will be backlit and you will also see the same thing on the backside of the scoreboard as well. So anyone coming from either direction on Elk Avenue, whether it be day or not, will be able to see that. As Dr. Gardenhour pointed, it also includes a sound system, which is obviously a key component as well. And it also includes, at the bottom, you'll notice there's a reference to 25-second clocks. Those are also included in that. That's not mandated by the TWSAA, however we feel in the near future. It probably will be. And so our thought was we would go ahead and incorporate that now when we have the ability to go ahead in the sub-drainage area to put a sleeve in to fix these in each end zone.
Logistically, the scoreboard is, if I'm standing in the parking lot now, far in the field?
It is. It's on the berm. It is not directly behind the goalpost. It's shifted north or toward Elk Avenue. So it's offset, maybe, I don't know, 40 feet or so roughly. So it's offset, which is pretty typical when you, in stadiums you see now. Most of them, don't put them behind the goalpost because there's potential for balls being kicked and damaging the scoreboard. So it's off to the right toward Elk Avenue.
But it'll be in better view for the home fans.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That eliminates the goalpost, you know, potentially being in line of sight.
Have you spoken with Coach Witten about sunset direction, that sort of thing and location relative to where the sun will be setting and his team's ability to see it, you know? That's, it's on the other end right now and I think that they, that sun setting on that side, I think he tries to receive first, but it might be something to find out if
Certainly would be.
They want to know if you can see the play clock.
Right.
Are we prohibited from doing advertisement on the scoreboard? I mean, I see a lot of stadiums with Pepsi or not using, so it's all drink company.
We're looking at several options, that potentially being one. We're looking at several options for additional signage revenue. And so we would hope to maybe bring some of those ideas to you maybe next month to give you an idea about where we are. We think there's some, there's definitely the potential there to do some of those types of things. We're trying to balance, you know, aesthetically, we obviously don't want something that has, you know, all these distractions everywhere. We want to do it in a systematic way and so we're working right now through those logistics.
Anybody else have any other questions or comments? So were these two projects always separate from the main construction? The sign and the sound system were always separate from the whole project?
They always have been separate, yes.
Okay.
We'll say in the original project, there was very minimal sound system. It literally, I think, was maybe two speakers off the corner of the press box, which, as you know, no one on the home side would hear and, you know, certainly no one on the visitor's side. So that was the only component that was in.
Well, and again, we're going to do this once. We got to do it right, so, yeah. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Hearing none, item on the floor is to approve scoreboard and sound system for the new EHS stadium. Bid specifications approved through TCPN contracts. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. And that looks like that's it. No one leave because we need to find the time for our workshop. But the next regularly scheduled board meeting will be Thursday, April 16, 2015, 6:30 here in the Matt Pierce Boardroom. I get a motion to adjourn? Have a second?
Second.
Have a good evening.